Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the City of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material, personal and conflict of interests where relevant and requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Are there any apologies? There being no apologies, Lord Mayor, can I invite you to present the budget, please?
Mr Chair, before proceeding with my budget presentation, I would like to point out that a copy of each budget submission for the 2019-20 financial year has been placed in front of each councillor and a full set of documents have been tabled. Mr Chair, I now move, sorry, Mr Chair. Okay. Today, I rise with great pleasure to present the 2019-20 Brisbane City Council Budget. It's a budget that will build a better Brisbane and protect and grow our lifestyle. And Brisbane is a great place to live, work and relax, and Australians are voting with their feet to make their home here, with our city recording the highest net gain of internal migration of all capital cities. We truly live in one of the best cities in the world, and it's getting better all the time. Brisbane is a friendly and safe city, it's a healthy and active city, it's a clean and green city, and it's a smart and prosperous city. We know that it can be even better tomorrow, and Team Shriner has a clear vision for the future of our city. This budget outlines my ambition for building an even better Brisbane over the next decade and protecting our incredible lifestyle and green space. This is my focus, and this budget outlines a raft of initiatives to deliver on my commitment to the people of Brisbane. The budget has an unprecedented investment in the city's green space. We are preserving the unique character of our streets and backyards, we are protecting our river encachment, and we are protecting our wildlife habitats. Team Shriner has plans for getting you home sooner and safer. We're delivering the Brisbane Metro and five new green bridges, a city with more and better public transport and a city with better connected roads. As Lord Mayor, I'm focused on making sure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today, and this budget outlines how we are growing the Brisbane lifestyle, creating more to see and do in a city that's clean and green. We're also focused on creating jobs while planning for the future. It's about protecting what's great about our city and its suburbs, protecting our fantastic lifestyle and green space, and protecting Brisbane's wildlife and koala habitats. The people of Brisbane can trust Team Shriner to keep delivering the local services they value, fantastic parks, wonderful libraries, modern transport and upgraded roads and footpaths. But Team Shriner is also building Australia's most small business friendly city by providing more support to local small business. We have the experience together with a renewed, passionate team needed to keep our city heading in the right direction. The LMP has consistently delivered for the people of Brisbane. We have responsibly managed the city's budget, and we're investing the dividends in building infrastructure and growing the Brisbane lifestyle. We believe in Brisbane's unlimited potential, and we're incredibly optimistic about our city's future. Mr Chair, this LMP administration has always been focused on building the infrastructure our city and suburbs need, and I want to pay tribute to the achievements of my predecessors as well as the entire team. More than $7 billion of major infrastructure has been built as part of the largest combination of major projects ever initiated by a local council in Australia. Our team invested record funding into councils' buses and bikeways, we've doubled the number of City Cats on the Brisbane River, we've built new ferry terminals and delivered Australia's first green bridge. Because of all of this investment, without a doubt, Brisbane today is a better place than it was in the past. Our team has also created new green space to make our city livable and sustainable for our children. We've delivered the 2 Million Trees Programme, we've created big new community parks in suburbs like Tennyson, in Cooperoo and To Wong, and Brisbane has twice been named as Australia's most sustainable city, reflecting the clean and green status of our neighbourhoods and suburbs. We've delivered the New Farm River Walk while I was the Infrastructure Chair, and we stood firm against Labor opposition to the creation of the Howard Smith Walves precinct. It's a precinct that's now regarded as one of Brisbane's most exciting lifestyle destinations. Our team is on track to deliver our four-year plan to safeguard the city's important green space and koala habitat with the purchase of 750 hectares of bushland by next year as part of the Accelerated Bushland Acquisition Programme. Continuing to protect Brisbane's significant bushland is part of my ambition to ensure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. One of the hallmarks of this LMP administration has always been responsible financial management. We've kept the budget strong and balanced despite the impacts of droughts and floods, despite the global financial crisis and through multiple property market cycles. Looking back, it would be easy for casual observers to think that balanced budgets are a given. As a former Finance Chair, I can assure you they don't happen by accident. We only have to look at the other end of George Street to see how Labor's history of reckless mismanagement and past budget deficits has led to rampant borrowing just to keep the lights on. In contrast, our record has been consistently balanced budgets and the responsible use of borrowing to fund new long-term infrastructure. It's the difference between spending up big on the credit card or taking out a home loan for a long-term asset like the family home. Labor spends money like there's no tomorrow, we are investing in a better tomorrow. In fact, the state government's own Queensland Treasury Corporation upgraded council's credit rating in 2012 to Strong with a neutral outlook, and this has remained the case for the past seven years. I am not aware of any other council with a stronger rating. Mr Chair, today I confirm that the 2019-20 average increase in rates for owner-occupiers in residential properties will once again be 2.5%. For owner-occupiers, this average rates increase equates to $10 on the quarterly rate notice or 77 cents per week. It is strong financial management that has allowed this administration to continue delivering major infrastructure while keeping the city's books balanced. A prime example of this is the City of Brisbane Investment Corporation. The CBIC is Brisbane's Future Fund and is charged with delivering value for Brisbane City Council and, more importantly, for the residents of Brisbane. Labor have repeatedly said they will abolish CBIC and spend the money. Without the ongoing annual returns from CBIC, Brisbane residents would either face rate increases or the slashing of investment in green space and parkland. CBIC has provided more than $110 million in dividends to council and generated a rate of return of 11.5% since it was established back in 2008. Last year, CBIC delivered another $20 million in dividends to rate pays, which is now being invested in frontline council services. Mr Chair, when I first became Lord Mayor, I announced that the future dividends of CBIC would be directed towards an accelerated five-year programme to buy and create more parks, sports fields and green space for our city. Today, I'm reconfirming that this budget includes a Green Future Fund using a $20 million dividend for CBIC in its first year. Brisbane residents have told us they want more green space with new places to relax, and this five-year programme will deliver more land for community sport and recreation. This is a direct response, a result of the responsible economic management of this LMP team. CBIC is the city's Future Fund, and I can't think of a better way to plan for our future than by creating more parks, sports fields and green space. It's an investment in our priceless quality of life that makes Brisbane so popular and envied, it's the type of investment that we need to lock in Brisbane's place as Australia's true lifestyle capital. This budget also includes initial funding for transforming Victoria Park Golf Course into a world-class public park, creating Brisbane's biggest new park in 50 years. Overall, the expanded Victoria Park will be more than double the size of the city Botanic Gardens. About 26 hectares of land is currently used as a pay-and-play public golf course, which over the recent years has seen a decline in both patronage and revenue. The 18-hole golf course will close in 2021 when works commence to deliver the Victoria Park Vision. Council's new public golf course at Cannon Hill is expected to be operational at around this time. The existing golf course will be transformed into a space that everyone can use, while the popular putt-putt course, the driving range and the function centre will remain open. During 2019-2020, $1 million will be allocated to kickstart the community consultation and design for the Victoria Park Vision, protecting green space for future generations and helping make Brisbane an even better place to live and relax. The first step in making this vision a reality will be to consult with the community. Depending on what residents want, it may include water features, gardens, an amphitheatre, markets and play spaces. Council will involve the community in every step of this planning process and will hold community forums and public consultation to create the best design for this large green space. Importantly, Brisbane Metro will transport passengers directly to Victoria Park on Metro Line 2 services at Kelvin Grove and Hurston, and the new Cross River Rail upgraded station at the exhibition will also service the precinct. The Victoria Park Vision will add to the great new lifestyle opportunities that are seeing record numbers of people flock to our city to enjoy its sunny and laid-back lifestyle. People can trust Team Shriner to keep delivering fantastic parks. This budget includes more than $300 million to create new parks, enhance suburban green spaces and protect the city's unique natural wildlife. Councillor has identified 82 suburban parks that will be upgraded with new playgrounds or park amenities such as park furniture, gym equipment, barbecues or providing opportunities for local residents to enjoy active and healthy lifestyles with high-quality facilities. Each park precinct is a crucial aspect of what makes Brisbane a great place to live, work and relax, and I'm committed to ensuring our city has recreational spaces to meet the needs of future generations. We will also invest $1.7 million specifically to maintain lookouts across the city, and this investment will help, sorry, lookouts like Mount Cravat and Stephens Mountain, providing residents with an ample opportunity to take in the views of Brisbane and the city's expanse of urban forest. Brisbane already has more than 600 hectares of urban parkland across the city, and this investment will help deliver new parks at Lutwich, Upper Mount Cravat, Wollongaba, Durack and the Milton Urban Common. The budget includes $5.5 million to guide the exciting, long-term vision for the Oxley Creek Corridor, transforming the corridor into a world-class, green lifestyle and leisure destination. This funding will see the massive and underutilised Archerfield wetlands protected and enhanced and repurposed into a major environmental asset with quality recreational space. This area was formerly home to a wastewater treatment site and a factory. Mr Chair, Team Shriner is not only committed to expanding our local parks, but we're greening Brisbane's suburbs by increasing tree planting in suburban parks, creating tree-lined boulevards and providing households with the delivery of a free green waste bin going forward. The greening of Brisbane's suburbs includes $2 million for the next year to plant trees in Zilmere, Paddington, Greenslopes and Murray Re to improve the amenity of local shopping areas as well as beautifying busy traffic corridors through plantings in median strips. Residents love Brisbane for its open green spaces and shady boulevards, and in the coming financial year, we have allocated $22.8 million towards the planting and maintaining of trees across the suburbs. This is an increase of $4.4 million or around 25%. The budget also includes a jacaranda planting programme with a $107,000 boost to focus on bringing the spectacular purple colour to local parks in Belimba, St Lucia and New Farm. Like most people, I love our iconic jacarandas, and one of my favourite times of year is when they are flowering. Once these new jacarandas are planted and start to grow, jacaranda season in Brisbane will become even more colourful. Mr Chair, Brisbane is a clean and green city, and as part of this budget, there is $386,000 to continue to fund a comprehensive koala research programme, supporting a healthy population and also looking to re-establish koalas in suitable areas of koala habitat. The outcomes of the research will be shared with the Brisbane Koala Science Institute at Lone Pine Sanctuary as part of a wider effort to protect the koala population. Mr Chair, everyone loves koalas, and I can confirm today that as Lord Mayor, I will have the koala as one of our City of Brisbane official fauna emblems as part of our plan to make Brisbane Australia's koala capital. As many councillors are aware, I have long been advocating for more affordable public transport fares, and contrary to popular belief, council has no role in setting public transport fares. The Queensland Government, through their agency Translink, not only sets the fares, they run the ticketing system and receive all fare revenue. In fact, I have been fighting for cheaper fares since Anastasia Palache was the Minister for Transport under former Premier Anna Bly. In late 2016, following much pressure from council and the wider community, we had a small win, with the state government finally agreeing to reduce fares after many years of increases. While any fare reduction is welcome, in reality, it was not enough. We may have the, we may not have the ability to reduce public transport fares across the board, but we can spearhead targeted initiatives aimed at boosting patronage. Mr Chair, as part of this budget, seniors will be able to travel for free during off-peak times on Brisbane buses, City Cats and ferries from October this year or sooner if possible. The initiative will also apply to the Brisbane Metro when services commence. Free travel during off-peak times will not only make better use of available capacity, it will also create more opportunities for older residents to travel around our city and connect with family and friends. It's also about giving something back to the generations who have worked hard and contributed so much to help build our city and our community. Social isolation and loneliness among older residents is consistently a major problem raised by researchers. The evidence clearly shows that older residents are more likely to live on their own. At the time of the 2011 census, 24.3% of the Australian population lived alone. However, for people aged between 75 and 84 years, this figure jumped to almost 30%. For those aged over 85 years, more than 35% lived alone. Making it possible for seniors to get out and about more at no cost has the potential to deliver many positive benefits to our community and may also serve to support the tens of thousands of volunteer hours put in by seniors across the city each year in community-based organisations. This initiative will benefit seniors across every suburb of Brisbane. Free off-peak travel for seniors on council's public transport will go a long way to encourage greater use of public transport, and I again call on the state government to adopt the same approach for rail commuters. This budget also retains the largest pensioner remission scheme in Australia, with a council-funded 40% remission on the rates bill for full pensioners, increasing the maximum from $1,015 up to $1,040. Part pensioners will receive a 20% remission on their rates bill, rising from a maximum of $474 up to $486. By providing a one-year, a one-year 50% rates remission for first-home buyers, Team Shriner is giving targeted cost of living relief at a time when residents are often stretched to their financial limits. Making the big move from renting to owning for the first time can be a stressful and costly experience. Just when you think you've paid all of the one-off expenses to get yourself into your new home, another unexpected bill always seems to come along. Our rates remission will mean up to $1,000 extra in the backpockets of first-home buyers in that critical period of financial adjustment. We recognise how important home ownership is, and we want to see more people getting into the market and owning a piece of Brisbane to call their own. The rates remission will commence from the 1st of October and will be available on homes with a value of less than $750,000. Like the pensioner rates remission, the first-home buyers remission will be available on homes acquired as the principal place of residence, regardless of whether it's a new build or an existing house or unit. Brisbane's housing affordability and great lifestyle is a key motivator for more people wanting to call Brisbane home, and there's an estimated 1,300 people a month moving to Brisbane. This budget outlines my ambition for Brisbane for the next decade, and that includes building Australia's most small business friendly city. Team Shriner is helping to create a city of neighbourhoods by bringing new life to residential precincts in the suburbs while backing small business with more support and lower fees. Small business are the backbone of Brisbane's economy, with more than 124,000 small businesses providing local goods and services across the city, and more importantly, providing local jobs. Team Shriner is backing small business by providing a $2 million reduction in fees and charges, helping to support new suburban dining, food vans and business advertising with a higher discount offered to startups to help them thrive and grow at a time when they need help the most. The discounts offered will be focused on fees and charges that small businesses are often most impacted by, such as suburban footpath dining permits, food van licences, market stall fees and business advertising applications. Since becoming Lord Mayor, I've announced a new policy to ensure 80% of council's procurement is to Brisbane and South East Queensland business, and that council will also preference quotes from local suppliers first for contracts of $250,000 or less. Small-scale business can end up being mid and even big business, and with the right support, we want to provide these opportunities for new businesses to grow and to stay in Brisbane. Almost 30 years ago, Brisbane City Council established a visionary task force to revitalise some of the inner cities' areas that were languishing. The Urban Renewal Task Force was formed in 1991, led by the late Trevor Radcliffe. It was a great initiative, and I want to commend former Lord Mayor Jim Sawley for his foresight on this matter. Since then, under successive different administrations, the success of Brisbane's urban renewal programme has been nothing short of remarkable. Council's foresight, together with the support from the federal government through their Better Cities Programme, brought together funding from federal, state and local government. One of the many projects funded through this programme was the $22 million upgrade of the main sewer line through New Farm and Tenerife. This helped to enable the revitalisation of a degraded commercial precinct into a vibrant and highly desirable inner-city community. Research conducted by QUT on behalf of the Property Council shows that the Better Cities Programme catalyst funding has helped unlock an incredible $5.3 billion in private sector investment. As Lord Mayor, I'm committed to the whole city for urban and suburban areas, and I am proudly a suburbanite. I want Brisbane to be a leader not only in urban renewal, but in suburban renewal. Today, I'm announcing funding and the creation of a brand-new suburban renewal task force with $550,000 allocated for the 2019-20 financial year. I want to see council apply the many learnings from the urban renewal task force out into the suburbs. I'd like to see all three levels of government working together to deliver the support and the enabling infrastructure to facilitate the revitalisation of suburban precincts and villages. We already have a great example of suburban renewal right here in Brisbane, it's Nunda Village. The construction of the Nunda Bypass Road, the ready availability of good public transport and some planning changes to support revitalisation have all worked together to create an exciting suburban village. Nunda is an example of what's possible with the right investment and a good partnership between government, the community and business. This budget includes an investment of $793 million to deliver modern public transport and to get residents home sooner. This record level of investment demonstrates council's ongoing commitment to providing world-class public transport, meaning more buses for the suburbs, fewer cars on the road, quicker and more comfortable trips and more travel options for residents and visitors. Team Shriner remains committed to subsidising public transport and providing free services through the City Hopper and also the Free City Bus Loops. In this budget, I'm committing a record $134 million for a public transport subsidy, an increase of almost $8 million on last year alone. A further $32 million will also go towards the purchase of new air-conditioned and accessible buses to maintain a modern, low-emission bus fleet. I've also allocated $1.5 million over two years towards an electric bus trial as part of our commitment for a clean and green Brisbane. Electric bus technology has moved ahead in leaps and bounds in recent times, and I want to ensure that we have the opportunity to test the latest and the best technology here in local operating conditions. I'm also committing $1.3 million towards continuing to progress the planned Mount Coother Bus Shuttle Service, connecting up the summit with JC Slaughter Falls, the Mount Coother Botanic Gardens and the Visitor Information Centre. Team Shriner is growing your lifestyle so that you can do more of what you love. We're transforming access to the river to create more recreational river hubs with paddle-up pontoons and space for fishing and mooring. More than 5.4 million passengers travel by ferry or City Cat annually, and over the next three years, we will invest $11 million to ferry terminal upgrades, with Guyat Park now underway and due for completion later this year, and the new Howard Smith Walves ferry terminal commencing next year. Team Shriner is committed to ensuring Brisbane has a modern public transport network, and this budget outlines a record $30.9 million in funding over the next four years to deliver six next-generation double-decker City Cats to replace the aging second-generation City Cats. My very first announcement as Lord Mayor was of a plan to build five new green bridges to provide better connectivity across the Brisbane River. These five green bridges are all about getting people home sooner and building a cleaner, greener and more active city. They will take traffic off our roads, they will free up time for people to spend with family and friends, and they will fill crucial missing links in our transport network. The budget includes $519 million over the next four years for these new green bridges, and they're aimed at tackling traffic congestion, improving public and active transport and creating a healthier, more active city. Team Shriner is committed to giving people more travel options and getting more cars off the road by linking Kangaroo Point and the CBD to Wong and West End, St Lucia and West End, Bell Bowery and Wakols Station, and also crossing Breakfast Creek. That means more convenience, better access and more choice when it comes to travel. Council will contribute up to, at least two-thirds of the cost of these bridges, up to a total of $550 million, and on top of this, we will also seek contributions from the state and federal governments. Our plans for getting you home sooner includes more than $870 million of funding over the next four years to deliver the Brisbane Metro, a project rightly ranked among the nation's highest priority infrastructure projects by Infrastructure Australia. With Brisbane Metro, you will be able to get home up to 50% quicker with peak services every three minutes and 24-hour operation on the weekend. The Brisbane Metro project is fully funded with a $300 million commitment from the federal government. This year, contracts will be awarded to enable the detailed design and commence the construction of inner-city infrastructure, which includes a state-of-the-art new Underground Cultural Centre Metro station and a tunnel beneath Adelaide Street. Contracts will also be awarded to commence the detailed design and construction of the Metro Depot, as well as the design and build for the Pilot Metro Vehicle, which will be the first of its kind anywhere in Australia. While the initial Brisbane Metro network operates across 18 stations and 21 kilometres of busway, council remains committed to expanding the metro network to the city's outer suburbs, with future stages in the northern and eastern suburbs, to name a few. Mr Chair, the budget includes funding for the next two years to develop a prioritised transport action plan for the north-western suburbs. We want to develop a long-term transport plan that will help residents get home quicker and safer. Council, in partnership with the Morrison federal government, will identify the best ways will identify the best ways to cut congestion in the north-western suburbs. The state government's north-western corridor concept was identified more than 50 years ago and was included as part of their long-term transport plans back in the 1980s. Decades later, there is still no action. Meanwhile, congestion on the north side continues to get worse every year. The north-western corridor concept is not and has never been a council project, nor is it a council responsibility to deliver. Having said this, we're not prepared to let residents suffer indefinitely from the state government's lack of action on critical long-term infrastructure projects. That's why we are stepping up to take a fresh look at how traffic and transport issues on the north side can best be addressed into the future. To be clear, council cannot solve the north side's transport challenges alone, but we are prepared to show leadership and help progress the planning. And Mr Chair, I can confirm that Team Shriner supports a Metro Three Line to the northern suburbs, and a key priority of the transport action plan will be to identify opportunities to expand Brisbane Metro to the north side. Team Shriner is investing $818 million to help get residents home quicker and safer. The 1920 investment will progress key corridor upgrades at Kingsford Smith Drive along Brisbane's crucial bayside links with the Winham Road Corridor and continue construction of the Murphy and Ellison Road upgrade in Gibang. The budget will also deliver on projects tackling suburban congestion and improving safety, with upgrades to intersections in Camp Hill, Runcorn, Nunda, Middle Park and South Brisbane, to name a few. Council stands ready to provide funding to the state government for the construction of open-level crossings, and we have committed $40 million to the Lindem Open Level Crossing replacement. Open-level crossings are a state government responsibility, and it's now up to them to get on with the work to complete this project. We've also had funding allocated from the Morrison federal government of $85 million to the Lindem Open Level Crossing. This budget continues the LMP's record of achievement in creating dedicated bikeways and walking options, with record levels of investment towards active transport to continue delivering an extensive citywide network which is safe and convenient for connected bikeways. This includes an allocation of $1.6 million, new funding on a new project to provide safer paths to school and fixing the missing links within 400 metres of local schools. This will complement council's highly successful active school travel programme. We're allocating $25.5 million to construct key bikeway links in Nudgee, Murray Ree, Wakely and Wishart, as well as the key projects such as the Botanic Gardens River Walk. Mr Chair, Team Shriner is committed to growing your Brisbane lifestyle regardless of your age, ability or background. This means that you can do more of what you love and connect with the people and places that make our city great. Our vision is for a city where everyone feels they belong, and today I can announce that we will deliver an Australian-first incentive scheme to support the provision of universal housing. This will result in homes that are usable and marketable to almost everyone. Currently, housing designs do not work for many people, including older people, people recovering from injury or illness, parents with prams and people who have mobility difficulties. Council will deliver an infrastructure charges rebate of 33% over the next three years to those who are building universal housing for multiple dwellings and residential care facilities if they meet the industry gold standard for livable housing design. Council will look to introduce future city plan amendments to introduce a silver standard of design as the new minimum standard for all dwellings across the city in the future to deliver on our vision for a city where everyone feels they belong. As part of council's commitment to creating more to see and do, more than $10.6 million will be invested in supporting Brisbane's thriving arts and cultural experiences. This budget includes $4.6 million to help deliver thousands of markets, events and festivals each year which residents have come to know and love. Brisbane is home to a number of successful city festivals like the Brisbane Festival, along with many great suburban events, including the Mandalay Jacaranda Festival, Nunda Village Festival, Brisbane Billy Cart Championships, as well as a wide range of multicultural festivals such as the Brisbane Chinese Cultural Festival, Dwali Indian Festival of Lights and Panieri Greek Festival. The budget includes funding for the delivery of a new library at Bracken Ridge, extended library opening hours and a new outdoor cinema programme in the suburbs. It also includes enhancements to the popular Brisbane powerhouse. I can announce today that we will have a midnight trial for the CBD Library at Brisbane Square, with hours extended on Wednesday and Friday nights to provide more opportunities for people to access these excellent facilities. There will be $9.9 million allocated to aqua parks, pool upgrades at Cooperoo and South Brisbane and refurbishments in 2019-2020, ensuring Brisbane residents continue to have access to more active and healthy lifestyle opportunities. Council is also committed to supporting the development of Brisbane's sporting infrastructure. Brisbane is home to approximately 550 sports fields, 110 hard courts across the city, and our investment of $4.8 million will ensure that the continued availability of fit-for-purpose, safe sporting areas that are available to sports players and the community year-round. Major events are very important to our city as they enhance our profile and directly shape the image of Brisbane as a tourism, business and investment destination. This budget includes an investment of $6.9 million to help attract visitors to fill our hotel rooms, to boost local jobs in hospitality, service and retail sectors. Major events are injecting more visitor expenditure into Brisbane than ever before, and their economic impact is expected to reach $250 million by the end of the financial year. Brisbane has a clear strategy to attract more national and international events to the city as part of our 2020 New World City Action Plan. Highlighted in the plan is our commitment to attract and grow major events with a goal of at least one significant drawcard event per month. Examples of this are events like the Brisbane Cycling Festival, the NRL Magic Round, Curiosity, the Brisbane International Tennis, the World Science Festival and the Royal Ballet at CUPAC. Brisbane's year-round calendar of major events and cultural attractions has contributed to a record influx of international and domestic visitors to our city, with more than 7.8 million people visiting Brisbane in the last year. Visitors are spending more than ever, with the total visitor, both domestic and international expenditure in Brisbane worth around $7.8 billion to our economy. That is an incredible result and makes a real difference to Brisbane business. Brisbane is becoming increasingly sought after as a destination of major events, and more people recognise our world-class infrastructure venues, accommodation and leisure offerings in leading industry sectors. Mr Chair, we live in one of the best cities in the world, and it is getting better all the time. Brisbane people can trust Team Shriner to keep delivering the services they value, and my ambition is for the Brisbane of tomorrow to be even better than the Brisbane of today, and we have a clear vision to make that happen. This budget outlines our plans to get people home sooner, to build the better Brisbane and protect our lifestyle with unprecedented investment in transport and the city's green space. Mr Chair, the delivery of this budget would not have been possible without the assistance of many people within council. I would like to personally thank my LMP team members, particularly the Deputy Mayor, councillor Christa Adams, and also the Finance Chair, councillor Adam Allen. To Mr Chris Anstey, Mr Nick Kennedy and Ms Gemma Long from my office for their assistance in formulating this budget and their ongoing commitment to our city and its future. I also want to thank and acknowledge the support provided by the Chief Executive Officer, Colin Jensen, Divisional Manager Bill Lyon, the Chief Financial Officer Paul Oberley. To Mark Russell and Tanya Neesh and the Budget Team, thank you to each and every one of you. To all our council staff, I offer my thanks for your hard work and dedication to building a better Brisbane. Mr Chair, this budget is all about the future, and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can I invite you to adjourn this meeting until Friday morning, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move this meeting of council to be adjourned until 9am on Friday the 14th of June 2019.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that this meeting of council be adjourned until 9am of Friday the 14th of June 2019. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
On the contrary, no. The ayes have it.